Number two, approval of the minutes from July 22nd and July 30th and August 13th.
Second.
Any discussion on any of the minutes?
The July 22nd minutes have been amended to reflect changes from the, regarding that number nine, which was the plastic bag ordinance proposal.
Okay, anybody, I don't know if you guys have picked up on that, but Fran is trying to change 5G from the Conservation Commission to the B Y O.
Yep.
I saw that.
Okay, so.
But there is, but that's, it's changed in there, right?
Yeah.
So we're approving as submitted?
No, it was not changed in the submitted minutes. How it happened is they were already submitted, Fran emailed and said the following corrections need to be made, and how you correct minutes is you vote on changes and this meeting minutes, and it will be reflected in this meeting.
Oh, okay.
So based on our knowledge of the email, we are amending them?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Perfect. Works for me. Everybody all in board with that?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
First, let me just comment, the only thing I'd like to say is now that we're coming towards the end of summer, we're looking ahead towards the belligerent season, I think as part of our regular meetings going forward, we probably want to start talking about some of the capital projects and, you know, starting to bring up that and get, and hear from people about what we had this been. Number four, public comment.
Catherine Hunter, 31 Scotland Avenue. I noticed that there's an agenda item regarding the discuss and take action on the ad hoc committee. I would like to speak in support of the continuation of this committee. I'm not sure what action you're going to discuss, but I'd like to point out for the record that we're over a year into the process that's been established by this board. The current process is the, is the direction that this board said they would take in order to determine whether or not to bring Academy to referendum. Following the great loophole, the results were a community center. I thank this board for establishing the current sitting committee. The first part of the charge was for the current committee to explore the community center design and the budget that was established. The charge was then expanded in order to explore funding resources. I'm advocating for the fact that this committee's work is not done. The CIP application for the community center has been submitted, it needs to be continued. This committee also has a role in informing and the public and also bringing information for public outreach. If the Board of Selectmen intends to bring the community center for Academy to referendum in the spring, this committee should continue to sit in a supporting capacity until then. And then finally, I'd say that this committee has done a staggering amount of work, hundreds of hours, really impressive reporting, and they should be allowed to continue that work until we go to referendum. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Sadie Ferrera, 11 Lantern Hill. Just for general, I don't know, I'm supposed to be at the historical meeting that got canceled today, but I want to let the town know that the telecom companies are coming into town and they want to put giant 70-inch boxes on the telephone poles on Route One. And we happen to own a rental property on Route One, right across from the God Course. And I will be fighting this going up to Pura, up in New Britain, probably within a month or so, and I've been doing my homework because we are in the historical district, we're part of the downtown village district, we were under the guidelines of ACA, we built our home, and for the existing historical home that's there that has a plaque and everything. So I'm just looking for support from the town to help me fight this. They, they, they want Sprint, it's Crown Castle, I think Tom Vane, she probably received information from Crown Castle, you were supposed to. So it's a 70-inch box by 24 inches by 20 inches that they want to put on a telephone pole right at the end of our driveway. So for historical reasons, aesthetic reasons, just all the reasons, you know, we are going to fight this, so I'm hoping the town can help. I've already contacted Noreen Kahuta, she said she would try to help, so I got a letter from any of the historical or the Board of Selectmen saying, if you want information, I've got 126 pages of information. If you have any questions, feel free to ask me. They're, they're all coming, and they're going to put 5G in there. This is for 4G, so.
Thank you.
Walter Lippman, a citizen of Town Madison for the last 27 years. On January 11th, 2018, I received a letter from Mr. Skarice that he was going to get, gather information that I had requested, and a year and eight months ago, I haven't gotten anything. The subject of my inquiry, and Al, you've been around for a long time, and I think you've.
Don't remind me.
I think you've heard me address this before. The teachers and this pre-employment drug testing for teachers is not done in this town. What we do do is anybody that drives a town vehicle has pre-employment drug testing done, and anybody every six months that has a CBL license is drug tested. My question is, the teachers in this town spend more time during the week with children than the parents do. Our previous superintendent was a little bit confused, she said, oh, the union would object to it, and I said to her then, they're not even members of the union, we're talking pre-employment. I understand that anything that would come up would be, have to be part of the contract later on, but pre-employment, there are no rights, and the union has nothing to do with it. So Al, I'd like you to take it upon yourself as hearing me for a long time about this issue. I've asked kids in this town anonymously, there wasn't a single kid in this town that I spoke to, high school kids, I didn't talk to anybody else, that was opposed to pre-employment drug testing. I spoke to three teachers, one of whom I know, and the comment was, you've got nothing to hide, what's wrong? I don't know why we don't do pre-employment drug testing. The other thing I want to bring up is, good, well, in regards to my street, other than Sycamore Lane, we had devastating damage from the storm. Our town employees did a wonderful, wonderful job cleaning up after the electric company came in and put new transformers in and new wires and everything else. They did an unbelievable job, there wasn't even a leaf left when they cleaned up the street and everything, so I personally am pleased. I would also like to say that when we have a storm in the future, that the first selectmen of this town puts out on the site that the dump can be open Saturday till, say, 5:00 and Sunday all day, because you have working people in this town that can't clean up after a storm during the week, and the only time it's available. Previous, first selectmen thought it was a good idea, and I think that should be reinstated where it goes out that, yes, the dump will be open. We only have two people and we'd have to pay them overtime, but I think it's well-spent overtime to be able to allow people to get rid of the debris from a storm. The other thing is, if people see something in this town, like the commercial says, say something. There are a number of signs in this town that are wrapped up in vines, you have handicapped signs that are completely faded away, and if you come down from Clinton on 95, which is a state issue, not, not a town issue, but we, we're trying to get everything working in this town so that the merchants are happy, this and that and the other, there are three signs when you're coming down from Clinton where Madison is obscured, so people could keep on going and not see the signs and not know that we're in business. So I would like the first selectmen to notify the state and let them do what they got to do. And they did clean up the tree by the sign that announced that there's a traffic signal ahead. Thank you.
Good evening. I am addressing a letter that I wrote to all of you, and I actually have a copy of it, so I want to give it to you.
Can you state your name and address?
My name is Eileen, Eileen O'Neill, and I'm on 49 Cottage Road, and it's regarding some of the procedure that went on for the approval of 41 Cottage Road for two apartments with occupancy of 10, 10 apartments and 20 parking spaces. I'm less than an acre of land that is in the Hammond Acid watershed area. So that alerted me to what was happening, actually, and it took me six weeks to figure it out, but it was the, what is supposed to happen and is a charge of the Conservation Commission who happens to be here this evening is that they review any inland wetland applications. So that step did not happen, and I've cited it in my letter via a February meeting where it was stated that it would continue to happen, and then in the June 10th meeting for the Conservation Commission, it was, it was not allowed to, it was, the commissioner himself, the chair, asked the town planner who was president why they weren't receiving inland wetland applications anymore, and, which is a charge of the Conservation Commission on the Madison, Connecticut website, and here is the form that's on there, and they were told that they are charged with some other matter to take care of and that they weren't getting, the inland wetland commission. So therefore, we as property owners, we're 20 seasonal condominiums next door, and there's about 600 seasonal people that, that summer here, I myself have summered here on leasehold estate, now I have this seasonal condominium for 28 years. So I've seen the evolution of what goes on in the Hammond Acid area, and I think that this, there's apartments being approved at the other end of Cottage Road, there's another project going on with the ice houses, there's a project here next to us, and I'm just wondering if there's, first of all, that the Conservation Commission still stay involved, because we are actually in the Hammond Acid watershed, we are on, rent a stream bed, and there's a pond that now I'm hearing through the grapevine might even get filled in. So if we do have a storm, as this gentleman was just saying, that could really, that could really affect, you know, how this, how all this water is handled. So it might be something that we, we really need to keep conservation in play, reviewing these and not just disbanding them preemptoratively, and so that's what I would like to say, and of course, the Board of Selectmen here. I'm also just wanted to let you know that I put my credential here, and not that, you know, this is, this is a credential from the United States Green Building Council, I'm a lead AP in neighborhood development and design, and I'd be happy to work with the Board of Selectmen to see what do we want the Hammond Acid area to look like, what about those 600 families that come here year after year, do we really want to put apartments in there, et cetera? Is there something else that we could do for vacationing families that are good taxpayers to the base? And I'm, I'm thinking that's really what you're looking for, is to stabilize the tax base, so I'll be happy to work with you all on that.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Hearing none, I'll move on to new business. Number five, discuss and take action to approve a proclamation honoring the Madison Little League.
Do you want to, do you want to read that, Scott?
Okay. We read this a week and a half ago at the state championship ceremony downtown on the Green, so it was, I don't think, do we have anybody for the team for tonight? I don't think we do. So here's the proclamation. Whereas the Madison Little League All-Star baseball team made history by winning the first state championship in program history and advancing to the New England Regional Championship in Bristol, Connecticut, and whereas the road to Bristol was paved with winning championships at the Connecticut District sectional and state levels, the state final game was six to nothing, was a six to nothing victory against Max Sinaway of North Haven, and whereas at the regional championship, the team from Madison defeated the state championships, champions from Maine and Massachusetts before finally being defeated by Rhode Island champions, and whereas the team roster included Paul Calendrelli, Gavin Doyle, Nicholas Maynard, William Patla, Rocco Zagami, Trevor Cash, Chase Jeremiah, Alexander Modica, Johnny Ray, Aiden Doyle, Christian Kells, Shailen Pathy, and Morris Selmani. Manager was Jim Maynard, coach Brian Jeremiah, and second coach John Ray. Now therefore, we, the members of this board hereby unanimously acknowledge the achievement of the Madison Little League Major All-Star baseball team, done the 16th of August 2019 in the town of Madison, Connecticut.
Thank you. Second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Number six, discuss and take action to approve a proclamation honoring the Madison Lutheran Church. I'll read this one. Whereas for the past set of the years, the Lutheran Church of Madison has been fulfilling its mission to receive and share the grace of God through worship, preaching the gospel of Jesus Christ, the message of salvation through grace alone, a special time of spiritual renewal, education, studying the Bible and accepting it as God's word, and encouraging and preparing our young people to live faithful lives as adults. Witness, living our faith by reaching out beyond our community and supporting mission endeavors near and far with acts of love and service. Service, accepting our calling to reach out in service to others, both within our church family and the greater community, to feed the hungry and care for the poor, sharing our food and clothing with those in need. And whereas by the grace of God, they will continue to fulfill their mission for the next 70 years and beyond, and now therefore, the board recognizes the tremendous service that the Lutheran Church of Madison provides to the town of Madison, done this 26th day of August 2019 in the town of Madison, Connecticut. We'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Number seven, discuss and take action on proclaiming.
What does I know?
You gotta send it down for signature.
It's just.
That's going in.
Discuss take action on proclaiming September 8th to 14th, 2019, as a time of remembrance, a community of volunteerism and community pride in the town of Madison.
I'll read that. But this is September.
It's in, in, it's during the week of September 11th.
Oh, I get it, I get it. Whereas the townspeople of Madison were so affected by the events of September 11, 2001, that they were moved to design a public ceremony of remembrance, one that has since been held on an annual basis, and whereas the citizens of Madison will come together on Wednesday, September 11, 2019, in tribute to those who lost their lives and to the heroes who responded, and whereas the town of Madison will participate in the days of caring by encouraging participation in this commemoration, and to help make our community stronger by serving as volunteers within the community, and now therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of the town of Madison, do hereby proclaim September 8th through 14, 2019, as a time of remembrance, volunteerism, and community spirit pride, dated Madison, Connecticut this 26th day of August 2019. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, agree.
Tom, do you know the time of the event on September 11th?
I think it's 6:00. I will confirm it. You'll, I'm, you're going to get a letter. This is the one that fans of?
Yes, yes. Thanks.
Okay. Number eight, update from the Conservation Commission.
Thanks. Purpose of this is to have an annual, not annual, a regular update to the, to the board about what we do, so I wanted to go over the, the mission.
Did you bring props this timeframe? We love.
No props. I did bring a lot of support though.
Nice.
It's not just me.
Nice.
I have an army of helpers, based on number seven of the public tourism. This is very important. I know number seven. There we go. I wanted to start off with that little quote at the bottom, it comes from the handbook of the Connecticut Conservation Commission, so there's actually a handbook to tell us how to do our job, which is very nice, it's very large, but it states that we are the consciousness, the conservation consu, consciousness of the community. So that's sort of a sum of what we have, what we're trying to do. Today I'm going to go over the, the mission of our commission, the accomplishments of the last 12-plus months. Special guest, I have, this summer we had the privilege of having a couple, three Daniel Hand High School students as interns, and boy, did we delegate and gave them a lot of stuff to do, and they're going to give you a little bit of a taste of that. And then, again, very timely, you talked about the capital budget, I'm going to talk about plans for the future, and I'll be asking some favors. Maybe apropos, back in the early 60s, the state felt it was important to have this thing called Conservation Commissions, and they established the powers and duties and what we shall do. And to be honest, we're not doing a lot of that, and you have other groups that are doing some of this, so I don't want to go into too much of this, but we do keep records of our meetings and our activity when we act reporting. But maybe more important is what you asked us to do in 2006. You said that we, we shall receive referrals, Mr. O'Neill, that the wetlands are the experts on wetlands, and if they want to have our help, they can refer a request to us to get involved. We also serve as technical advisors on anything that has to do with nature, please, you know, ask us, we're here to help. We also have been asked to do an inventory of natural resources, which is just a, a database of all the nice stuff that we have, natural, historical, archaeological, cultural in our town, so that we know what we have and we don't trample on it, we take care of it. We create an index of open areas, that's also been done by some of the other boards and commissions of our, of our town, and the one that we've been focusing on the most for the last year or so has been this last one, communicating and educating the public about nature and about how to protect it. I have a problem though. We're a committee of volunteers, and it's, we were meeting, we were meeting twice a month because we had a lot of things to do. We're going to make some changes to the structure of our committee, of our sort of meeting structure, but we have three openings, two of them are on your agenda to, to recognize. One other, well, so that's a bit of a challenge we have. Well, I may go back though, I haven't said that. We're fortunate though to have very qualified people. We have Christine, who's our vice chair, is a high school science teacher, Heather Crawford, many of you know, she is, comes from Yukon, has a lot of environmental expertise, former chair, Alex is a local resident, he knows our town better than anyone in this room, land-wise, where things are. So good for that. So what did we do last year? Well, the first thing we did, we looked at the webpage and I hated it, I thought it was awful. No offense, we have a lot of stuff going on, I wanted to spruce it up a little bit, and I added, I asked to have landing zones, five major areas, plants, insects, green home. This is something where I think new residents to the town, if they go to our site, click on, and you, they'll find links, internal links and external links, to help them understand what to do. When I, I came from Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, nine years ago, I didn't know anything about setic, so I found it on the website, on our site, and I learned a little bit about it. So now it's there, we're doubling up to make sure we get it. We also, invasive plants, didn't know that much about, what to do with it, it's there now, we have a lot of information, and it's going to be more. We have five, in regards to education, we narrowed it down to five major areas that we wanted to focus on. These are the five, invasives, obviously the plants and insects that are around us, pollinators, insect, like butterflies and bees, pesticides which can impact the pollinators, single-use plastics, and dark skies, that's having too much light pollution. Those are five areas that we thought were important for our town, our coastal, our coastal town, and we found some, some good venues to sort of do this kind of education. We always go to Bauer Park and have a tent there. We do the Earth Day on a regular basis, and we help support the green up, cleanup activities that we do. We started doing farmer's market once, once a month on the first Friday of the month. We're there as a presence to show that we're, that we exist, and we have information to help them out. Ryerson reached out to us, now we, we talked to them, and then Daniel Hand's Echo Club actually gave us two interns, or three interns. So now some photographs, we'll go through quickly, Bauer Park, even when it's gloomy and rainy, we're there. The top, and how's, how far, whoops, sorry, went too fast. The, there's the Earth Day, I mentioned, we're there, we were there this year at Madison Earth Care to, again, promote our, our commission and look for recruits, by the way. Farmer's Market, we have a table, it's a great organization, I love how, what they do there, and we got a lot, we get a lot of traffic there. We had 24 people at one, one time talk to us. Ryerson, a teacher, sent us a, a letter to the office here and said, you know, could you help us teach the students about how their actions and choices impact the world around us? And I gave it some thought and talked to the group, and we went in and we, we said, you know, we live in a, on a coastal city, a coastal, coastal town, and, and I, I've seen so much trash on the beach, that I brought a bucket of trash in, and I asked the kids to look at it, and they talked, we talked about single-use plastics and what they saw there, and we asked them, well, what can you do about it? And they talked about talking to their parents, talking to the board, and, and they, they drew posters, and we had those posters around this room for a good two months. So that was fun. The Echo Club, there's a club, an after-school club called the Echo Club Environmental Club, where the moderator invited me in, and I talked to them about what we do, and I asked for their help, and they gave me some great, great students to help us out, so. They also do Earth Day. They're also are going to be involved potentially in a composting activity that Dave Anderson is working with on the front as well. All right. Natural resource inventory, this is the data that we're collecting about our beautiful town and everything that's around it. It includes trees, rocks, beautiful vistas.
Wetlands.
Wetlands, of course, water features and stuff. Well, we, our team found a wonderful app, there's always an app for that, EpiCollect, it's actually available for the public. You go to this app and you could, wherever you're standing, and when you add into the data, and then you can take a photograph, it gets into the app, and then it can be uploaded into the cloud. And from there, we've collected over 100 data points across the town, there's actually 120 now, because we kept going, and we now have taken that data, this is the good part, you all have a, a third-party company called Web GIS Maps, they, they do all the parcels for zoning and things, they created a layer of all those data points for me, and it's hard to see, but just all those green points there are the same points that you saw on EpiCollect, and if you, you can just click on one, and the data's there. It's our information as well as our photographs are there. What's it for? Right now, it's, we're just gathering more and more information, and eventually we'll have the information we need to do the second part of a natural resource inventory, and that's the toughest part. The toughest part is actually writing about everything we just found, and I'm talking about writing and writing and writing. Guilford has 147 pages of a natural resource inventory, so it's a lot of work, but this is the, this is the raw stuff that we need to help us understand what we have. So we have beautiful trees, we got beautiful rocks, but we also have great kids, and what I wanted to now ask my, my partners here to come up and explain, as I say, what they did for their summer vacation. They'll introduce themselves to you. Get out of the way.
Hello, I was a thousand.
And I'm Marina Dixon. And we're both rising juniors and the co-presidents of the Echo Club. Personally, I really care about single-use plastics and how we're polluting large bodies of water.
And I kind of find it frightening to think about what the world could look like in 50 years with the climate change that is accelerating, and so this, our third intern that, as Fran mentioned, is Sarah Casso. She was working with us in June and July, and, but she graduated Daniel Hand this year, and she's currently studying environmental sciences at Berkeley. And so overall, this summer has been a really great educational experience, and we've really learned a lot about sustainability. learned a lot about sustainability, and we really appreciated the opportunity to take part in like these meetings. These are the three projects that we were working on this summer, and we're going to tell you a little bit about them. So our goal for the invasive plants project was to provide educational materials for the commission's webpage. Sarah started her internship before we did, and she researched twenty-two invasive plants and ten invasive insects that are common to Madison. In our first week with all three of us working, we split up the research and wrote paragraphs about each invasive. Then we categorized these paragraphs into five categories, a shrub, vine, tree, aquatic, and herb, for the educational five-minute video. The goal for our video was to educate the town on how to identify and remove invasive plants. In each category, they have similar removal methods, so we picked the most common to Madison to feature in our video. We mostly filmed at Bauer Park and on Land Trust Trails, and Sarah Casso, our third intern, did most of the editing for this video. And the video and the paragraphs that we wrote are available on the Madison Conservation Commission website. Okay, so we're going to show you some of our video. First, we're going to show you the intro, and then we're going to name the plant, describe it, show you how to remove it, and then show you native alternatives and other invasives
Excuse me.
Hey, couldn't see her.
Howdy. We were just admiring these beautiful plants in our Madison community.
Whoa, Marina, do you see that?
What a shame that our native plants will be overshadowed by these invasive plants. Do you know what those are?
I do know.
Invasive plants are non-native plants that invade an area and crowd up natural plants, self-reproducing and damaging our ecosystem.
In fact, there are five types that we're going to talk to you about today.
Well, tell me about them.
First, we have the vine category. This specific vine, right here, is called bittersweet. It grows in woodlands, grasslands, roads, road edges, marsh edges, and more, because it can grow in both sun and shade. The leaves that alternate are oval shaped and glossy. The roots are bright orange, and when they become older, you will see this vine with a medium brown color. Then, in the spring, you will see this vine, if it has green-yellow flowers. Then in the summer, you'll see green fruit. Then in the fall, you'll see yellow-orange berries. Then in the winter, you'll see red berries.
Bittersweet is harnshiru. It is best to hand-pull the vine before it grows fruit. It's important to remove the root growth, and then sunbathe them in a trash bag before disposing of them.
If the bittersweet is very large but still needs to be removed, you can cut the top and the bottom of the vine, and then let it fall natural.
Another invasive like this is mylum in it. Now, let's talk about trees. This tree is a Norway maple. It can grow in a large range of soil types and temperatures, in both the sun and the shade. It has a linear bark that can grow up to sixty feet tall. In the fall, the wide, five-lobed leaves turn yellow, or less often crimson. During the spring, there are small yellow-green flowers. The fruits turn into helicopter-blade-like seeds in the summer. To confirm a Norway maple, cut the vein to check for milky discharge.
Since invasive trees are better at removing our pollutants than no trees at all, we want to prevent their spread rather than completely remove them. You can pull seedlings from the soil and round out stumps, or you can cut grass from the stump. Other invasive trees are black locusts and European buckthorn. Also, plant red maple or sugar maple as native alternative. Next, we have shrubs.
Moving on to our goal for the watershed education project, our goal was to provide educational materials and road signs for Madison's key watersheds. And so after studying a map of the watershed boundaries of Madison, we looked for the best locations for signage, and then we contacted two sign companies, Fast Signs and East Coast Signs, Ford Race Loaves. So then we researched more in depth on watersheds, and we started to plan out another educational video. It includes the protection and importance of watersheds and the locations of the local Madison watershed. We traveled to different watersheds around town to film. We also created an educational pamphlet with similar content to the video. On the left, you will see a prototype for one of the signs. It was modeled off of a sign that we found for like Ad Attach. It will show how to protect your watershed when you're just driving through, and one of the key points is to use care with synthetic fertilizers as these pollutants can run off into your watershed, and then they will run off into the sound. On the right is a screenshot from the pamphlet. On the first page is an explanation of what a watershed is and why it is important. The side column explains the importance of rain gardens. The center column has a map of Madison that shows which watersheds are in which part of the town. Then the back shows how you can protect the watershed that you live in. In the section of protection, we showed examples of the methods being used in Madison. For example, all the gardens in Bauer Park are organic. A brief reminder as to why watersheds are so important is because they're both used for drinking water and recreational purposes. They're also used as a food and water source for plants and animals, and the water quality can be worsened if you don't take care of the watershed. So before we hand the presentation back to Fran, we would like to thank him and the rest of the commission for this opportunity. We enjoyed contributing to the town in ways we are passionate about, and thank you to the board for listening.
Wow, now you know why I was so excited. All right, just last, last slide, plant, the last two slides, I need, I want your help to keep this going. I want to keep doing what we're doing. We're going to work with, we have a special project with Superintendent Skarice to talk about how we, the commission, can coordinate with their current curriculum. They're taught, he has a sustainability curriculum, and we want to be part of it, just like we were at Ryerson, we want to do some more of that. Sustainable CT, LeBron's, we can get to silver by doing some more creative things like a sustainability event. I wanted to help and create one for that. That's not going to happen tomorrow, but we need some time to work on it. I need your help, I got three spots. I get, right now, we're all Democrats, we can use unaffiliates or Republicans, and everybody I have today on the team lives above Green Hill Road. So if we could get somebody below Green Hill Road, that'd be great, too. Let's have diversity. The NRI, we've got to keep working at it, we'll keep getting data points, but we've been churning away, chugging away at the narratives, this written part, a hundred and forty-seven baked part. I could use some help, I talked to Dave Anderson, I'm getting some quotes for third-party support, I'll put it in front of you, and I'll put it in front in terms of the budget. So it may be a budget or an appropriation, but I want to hire three more next year, two or three next year, in the summertime for interns. I want to have a budget for the natural resource inventory to help us complete that, that's, we've been charged with that being our top priority. And with volunteers, it's very hard to do unless we have some support. Looking, some quotes I've gotten so far, between seven and ten thousand dollars. And I want to be more involved, I want to still be, right now, I can be requested to be involved, and I'm requesting back to be involved in terms of any major, major P&amp;Z reviews, and be an advisor, or at least run by, run the Coastal Resilience Plan by passes, too, so we can give some official comment on that. Not a big repress, just always keep us in mind. And so I want to just end it there, just say that conservation is about protecting Madison's land and water, but it's also about how we leave a legacy for our children. And that's it.
That was great, I appreciate it, thank you.
Tom, how does a request for funding from the Conservation Commission, how does it find its way in our budget documents, and what kind of a line item would appear on?
It'd appear in the land use line item, so we can talk to Dave about giving it into the budget. Number nine, discuss take action to approve a request from Beach Rec to purchase a used John Deere tractor for building and grounds, funds will come from the Plant Equipment Fund. Somebody?
Someone?
Thank you.
I'll second it.
There you go.
Scott, you want to talk about this?
Sure. The reason why I'm asking to do this is, we have found that our larger tractor is straining under the loads of our top dresser, as well as our seeder. We have to, we have to really lightly load it with seed, the three-point hitch is not as strong as we need. So I had my guys search tract, used tractors out. This is a used, it's a two thousand, it's got more horsepower, higher three-point hitch capability, and it has low hours. And I think it would be a good tool in our arsenal to help with the program that we've started in improving on the athletic fields, especially with compaction rate and, you know, all those things for player safety. We've had really good success with what we've done so far, and we just want to continue it, and we feel that this would be a good purchase for the town.
Scott, from where is this being purchased?
From the Plant Equipment Fund, that is.
He means who's selling it, who would be selling it to us?
We founded on Praig's List, it's on a gentleman's farm up in Griswold.
Yeah, farm. I take it there's going to be no warranty with this?
No, but the guys checked it out, it's got twenty-seven hundred hours, and it's a two thousand. And it was, it's one of the tractors that John Deere still made while they were in the U.S. It's not one that's made overseas.
And this is, you're saying it's budgeted?
It's a, it's, this equipment fund is funded through programs where we set aside for the larger things like sailboats and things like that, and it will still have, after this expenditure, it will still have almost thirty-one thousand in the accounts, which is where, this account is where we bought the Showmobile for the town, because that was all the program.
Making good use of that.
That was all program, right, yeah.
Does the, does the motion need to include the dollar amount? I noticed that it's not, but it's in the letter, should it? Or specific included? Doesn't matter. I think we should, right? Okay, so can we amend the motion to include the request of ten thousand dollars?
Let me read it over again, discuss and take action to approve a request for the Beach Rec Department to purchase a used John Deere tractor for ten thousand dollars for building and grounds, funds will come from the Plant Equipment Fund.
Second.
Who made the motion the first time? Was Jane, you?
Yeah.
So you remake?
I will remake it.
You can make a motion, can't you? You know that. You can make a motion, though.
I prefer to have you guys do it.
I'll second that.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Number ten, discuss and take action to approve line item transfers totaling four-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars from the Texas Department.
Second.
Discussion?
Can we get an itemized list of the four hundred dollars?
All in favor? Number eleven, discuss and take action to approve a special appropriation request for the amount of one-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-four dollars from Public Works in Engineering to fund the Texas Walkway lighting project. So who?
Second.
John, Rob, who wants to talk about it?
I can mention that. So at the, at the previous meeting, the Board of Selectmen voted to approve the rehabilitation of the Texas Walkway for, which involved a reduced scope of three-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety for the contractor to complete the rehabilitation minus the lighting, and the reason was that the, the bids that came in, we received four bids, came in over the grant-funded amount of four-hundred-thousand dollars. So, you know, the state, state OPM and Connecticut DOT approved the project with the reduced scope, but we would like to request doing the complete project, which also includes the lighting for the walkway for one-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand.
Did, when they approved it, the changing of the project, did they make any comments like they would really like to see us try to get this in?
Yes, they did. So that wasn't, it was not as, as if it was a condition of approval, but they did make the comment that they would like to see the lighting.
I'm assuming there's a safety issue here without having lighting there, right?
Yeah, without, without the lighting, it's essentially for daytime usage and not...
Well, we don't have too much lighting there now, right?
There's currently no lighting, no functioning lighting, lighting, spent that way for several years.
It's usable without the lighting, but I definitely feel...
It's a res, yeah.
Yeah.
John, can you help us understand what a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars buys in terms of lighting?
So it's lighting, lighting that's along, each post along the walkway for, is it six-foot spacing? Or, yeah, six-foot spacing that'll shine down on the walkway, and it's, you know, to illuminate your, the path, essentially, and it's, it's, I mean, we expect this to be fairly low maintenance. In the past, there's been bollards along the walkway that were easily damaged through vandalism and so forth. So basically lighting along the entire length of the walkway from Bradley Road to Route One, spaced at six feet. And then it also entails some bollard lighting outside of, beyond the walkway for that short stretch of pathway between the entrance to Texas Walk and Bradley Road.
How many fixtures are actually involved?
Oh, gosh, I shouldn't count.
Yeah, so I think the, the step, the step lights, the one that John's mentioning along like the railing, there's about ninety, ninety fixtures, and then the, there's twelve bollards. And the bollards that John spoke of that were either, not sure what happens in the past, but the twelve that are going in now are much more heavy-duty and maintenance-free, they're, they're, they're concrete, but the, with the fixture up at the top, so they'll be bolted in. The infrastructure's already in place there, so the contractor just basically has to pull the wires and rewire the bollard there. But so there'll be twelve there from basically, I think it's sort of from, I have to get the building down at the end there, where the angle point is, past Verizon, from the angle point all the way up to Bradley Road, there's twelve that'll go spaced intermittently.
Webster Bank, you think of Webster Bank?
Ah, yeah, Webster Bank in that area there. If you keep going down there where that angle point is, from, in the walkway, from that point all the way to Bradley, you'll have bollards, and from that point on, I think it's, yeah, I think it's approximately ninety step lights. I have to confirm on the plans, but yeah.
And the bollards over there have been vandalized, right?
Yeah, that, I mean, that's sort of like the implication that we've heard. I know for a fact, I've seen firsthand the older step lights that were built in, they were in those like metal encasements with almost sort of like, I'm not sure what type of cage that is, but those were clearly kicked in, you could see that there was damage to it, and like John said, these haven't been operating in some time. In fact, the only lighting you get there is from, the lighting from the Webster Bank parking lot, as well as the CVS parking lot, but then you have a solid five-hundred feet or so that's black, and unfortunately, that's part of the reason why it's not being used. So if we can illuminate this nicely from start to finish with the new deck, I think it'll, it'll be used much more frequently.
Thank you, Rob. I have one more question, though. As a selectman liaison to our town's Energy Committee, I am frequently chastised by its illustrious chairman, that sometimes the town conducts projects without consulting with the Energy Committee, especially on matters like lighting. Have we consulted with our town's Energy Committee about this?
No, I mean, I think, so the project went out to bid, we're looking, you know, basically that we had hired a design consultant to design all this, and relying on their knowledge, their expertise to design appropriate lighting. So that's, you know, that's approach we've taken, and we're looking for product that's appropriate and is, and obviously as low cost as possible that meets the need, so...
I think it was, I think it was important, when we were first looking at this project, Mylon McBroom was the prime consultant on it, who, they've done a number of projects in town, and they've done a great job. They were the prime consultant, they're in fact also going to be doing the Heather They're in fact also going to be doing the Heatherwood Drive bridge replacement. Part of the reason why we hire these consultants and procure them properly is to, we trust and we know that they'll do an adequate job. And they hired Silpa Petricelli, excuse me, as their subconsultant. So they basically had specked out these lights, and we've gone through a multiple review phase of the project. We had met internally with project stakeholders. So basically, that design was optimally vetted, I guess you could say.
Rob, it sounds like you've done a lot of homework. I'm not questioning that.
Yeah.
I know this board of selectmen wants to be supportive of its boards and commissions, and we've asked our town energy committee to help us in many, many projects in town. And yet, I think we find ourselves in an awkward moment right now. We're about to go ahead on a major project and we haven't even asked them for their opinion. So...
Actually, Woody has been in...
Has he?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
So he had some questions and we were, our consultant responded.
Well, thank you. I didn't realize it.
It was more of like a comment review process, but we sort of let our electrical engineer, who's licensed in the state of Connecticut, sort of drive the design.
Thank you.
Do you guys have a sense, just, I have no clue what $147,000 of lighting will give you. So, I mean, I appreciate the 90 fixtures and 12 bollards, but I still can't conceptualize it. So was there like a high, medium, and low, and we picked the medium? Like is this the Cadillac? Is this the low end? Do you have a sense of, I'm struggling with how to approve it because I can't visualize what I'm approving, so I don't know, sort of...
Media, like you want a comparison of fixtures amongst other fixtures?
No, no. I'm just thinking, are we getting a lot of lighting? Are we getting sort of average amounts of lights here? Are we getting sort of minimalist stick lighting?
I will tell you, we're getting the right amount of lighting for the application.
There you go. That's a logical answer. We're, yeah, perfect.
Industry standard chair.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other discussion? Okay, so we have a motion on the table for special appropriation. All in favor?
Aye.
Number 12, discuss and take action to approve calling a special town meeting on Monday, September 23, 2018, at 6:45 in Town Campus Room A. Take action on number one, a special appropriation request for the amount of $147,344 from the Public Works and Engineering Department to fund the Texas Walkway lighting project. So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number 13, discuss and take action to approve a charge for a 2019 Charter Review Commission. So moved?
Second.
We had a late, well, we had elected, changed the charge certificate out of the packet. Did you get a copy?
Everyone should have the new copy, though. And the change is in red.
There it is right there. So I think the endpoint that we've been kind of shooting for is the 2020 November election. The idea being that we'll probably get a pretty good turnout as it's a presidential year. And so working backwards from that timeline, with all the submissions according to Lawrence...
Timeline was created before this...
Right. It looks like we need to get going on this sooner rather than later. So I'm in favor of getting this ball rolling. We've been talking about it off and on over the last couple of years and it's...
Just promise not to say anything if we pass this. Any discussion? Any other discussion?
I'd like to focus on the charge first.
Sure.
It feels to me like there's a glaring omission here. We're asking this commission to consider recommendations from the selectmen, other elected officials, appointed boards, commissions, and town staff, but we haven't bothered to consult with the public, according to this charge, and...
State statute requires two public hearings.
Well, it's a...
It's a charge.
Yeah, I'm looking for something more than that.
It requires two public hearings.
That's, that's good. I think this commission needs to reach out to the public upfront, not just after...
A lot of the first public hearings have occurred before the committee meets.
Not before they meet necessarily, Gus, but the state says the first public hearing of the Charter Revision Commission must be held prior to any substantive work being completed. So they have to have a public hearing in the very beginning of their process and at least one more public hearing during their process before it gets sent to the town clerk for presentation to the board of selectmen.
That's good. So that's baked into this.
That is state statute. They don't get, they don't get away from that.
Okay, thank you, Rob, for clarifying things. I'm done with the charge, Tom, but I'm, this, I'm confused on what's written in red here. What is the date? May 8, 2019?
Oh, sorry, it should be 2020.
There you go. We're just checking to see if you're ready.
We already should have had it done.
So the charge, the actual results of the committee get submitted to the town clerk, not directly to us. And then the town clerk submits it to us. And this is the timeline for them to get it to the town clerk, right? Is that...
Yes.
Now, the state statute on this was written about 112 years ago.
It's okay. It's not broken.
Don't push around. Did you write it? Gus, based on your experience...
No, it's really antiquated, the wording and whatever, because it's been there forever.
Gus, based on your experience...
Yeah.
How long does it take a Charter Review Commission to do its work?
How long do you think it takes to work? It all depends, as you usually have to say. I figure the schedule I sent, Tom, the committee would need about six months. They have to report to you guys by August 1 of 2020, and that gives you two weeks to review and comment. And then the committee has to get it to the town clerk by September 1 in order to get it out of the ballot. And that's all dates by state statute.
What's the relationship of this May 8 date to the August date you just mentioned?
August 1 is the date that it has to get to this board of selectmen to approve or not approve.
Okay, and why are we, why are we saying that they have to finish their work by May 8? What am I missing?
So I...
So should we have, is this in our packet?
I gave, yeah, I gave a copy back.
So here's the detailed...
Behind it.
The detailed timeline.
So this is actually my detailed timeline, based on state statute, and then reviewed with the town clerk. So the town clerk says, in order for her to get this on the ballot for November of 2020, she has to have the final question to the state by September 1. So we use that as the drop dead date. So I worked backwards from there.
Good.
And I gave, and I input, you know, your final vote and question to the town clerk on August 24th, because that would be your normal evening meeting of August in 2020. And then I worked backwards from there. So there are certain meetings and public hearings that you need to hold within certain days of when documents are sent back and forth between you and the Charter Revision Commission. And there are certain timeframes that they have to make corrections based on your public hearing and your potential revisions. So you'll see that last column, I gave you what the rule is, why I came up with the date I came up. So...
Thank you for doing this, Lauren. This has helped.
The items that are italicized are ones that, you know, you have a little bit of wiggle room, but they need to be within so many days of the item above it. So there is some flexibility in the schedule, but there are other dates that are hard set.
So if Gus says we need six months, we don't really have six months because of all the other impacted stakeholders.
You have, you have about six months. You have, if you let them start their meetings on October 1, they'll have, October 1, June, yeah, I mean, they'll have a little more than six months with the back and forth, because their last action isn't technically May 8. It's two weeks, it's 15 days after you guys give them any revisions that they need to make.
What is the expected involvement of the board of selectmen in this process? Gus or Lauren?
So you all discussed at your last meeting, when we brought this up, that in this particular iteration of a Charter Revision Commission, you do not want board of selectmen members to officially be on the commission, but that doesn't mean that you shouldn't assign one or two of you as liaisons to attend most, if not all, meetings. And quite frankly, all five of you are welcome to attend all the meetings as long as you publicly say that you're there as members of the public and not as a quorum with the board of selectmen.
Anybody else?
We're hoping to approve this timeline because this is in state statute.
The timeline is just for your information so that you understand the timeline of if you get this approved tonight and you have membership approved for the end of next month, this is how it will look to get you to November 2020.
Does the state statute mandate any particular membership size for this commission?
What's typical? Do we know what's typical?
We're a minimum of five.
Minimum of five.
Is it?
And no more than, I think, two or three elected officials. Typically in the past, and you don't have to do this, but typically in the past, the board of selectmen have had a member of each party on the committees.
That's untrue.
And, you know, so there's two...
We did on the last one. We didn't have two before.
No, but I say typically in the past, there have been two members from the board of selectmen on. And usually the board of finance assigns a liaison to input on anything that addresses fiscal implications.
Didn't we talk about membership having seven?
You don't have to have the board of selectmen.
And that's what's in here.
Okay.
And you guys had seven for the last Charter Revision Commission, just that they were five members of the public and two members of the board of selectmen. This is just seven members of the public.
You're saying seven public...
I would suggest seven people so that you can get a couple of subcommittees of three each that can meet without...
Gets the work done, right?
But that would be on my own personal suggestion, so...
But even subcommittee work is a public meeting. The subcommittees don't meet in darkness. Subcommittees are unnoticed meetings.
Right, it just allows me to buy, I think that's what I'm saying. I have, I have, I'm completely supportive of going forward and doing this. I'm just slightly nervous about the timeframe, just given all of the things that we have in flight right now as a board of selectmen. So I just, I want to make sure that we're thinking about this and we're comfortable with this plan because we have a lot going on, whether it's the strategic plan, whether it's Academy, whether it's, we have a lot of things. I think I counted like 18 things that are on our plate right now of sort of in-flight programs that we're sort of governing and managing. That's a lot. So I guess, you know, I just need to feel comfortable from this board that, you know, we're still going to be able to complete the things that are already in process versus adding something else on our plate. We just need to be smart about it.
Yeah, I've been on three Charter Revision Committees. They run themselves. I mean, we can participate, we can be involved, but they run themselves. It's not, we don't have to run them.
Well, and we're really, we're prohibited from, from taking that kind of hand in the process, too.
If I state that...
Yeah, our input comes at the end when they present it.
Right, our role is not to guide the work into what we want it to be. It's to, it's to let them do it and then present it back to us.
We have spoken here in the past with Gus's encouragement about certain things we are especially interested in asking this commission to have a look at. How does that find its way into the process? It's not in the charge.
But state statute, the appointed authority, which would be you guys, can make suggestions for what the committee should look at. But once you appoint them, they will do whatever they want to do and the recommendations. And you will have two opportunities to review the recommendations and turn them down. For instance, three years ago in the town of Clinton, the board of selectmen turned down the Charter Review Committees, and four of them lost in the next election.
A little warning there?
Just shot over the bow there, Gus.
Lauren, Lauren had put together and sent all of us a list of issues, specific issues. So, I mean, I would think that that's...
A starting point, yeah.
Starting point, but it's not, you know, again...
But we don't bake that into the charge, I guess, is what I'm hearing.
No, they are looking at the whole charter and do what they feel is appropriate.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number 14, discuss and take action on the Ahaq Academy School Community Center Design Committee.
Ah, so moved?
Second.
Taking action on?
Yeah.
I don't understand, I don't understand what that means.
Well, I think...
Usually that's an agenda item, but we haven't made a motion. What's our motion?
So, I won't...
That was a little random.
I think the discussion is where are we at with the Ahaq Academy?
Right, but just help me clarify. You just made a motion. What is the motion you just made to discuss and take action? It's on our agenda item. What is the actual motion you're making?
Since discuss and take action on the committee.
Okay, that's our agenda item, so, okay. I don't understand.
So let's... What is the action that's being contemplated?
Yeah, what are we trying to solve?
That's what we want to talk about.
But usually there needs to be a specific motion to act on, so this is...
Well, okay, so, I mean, if we read the charge, which is the version 2.0 of the charge, right, since we reconstituted the committee, the charge is create a community-centered design proposal, create a cost estimate for the community-centered design proposal to include operating budget data, capital, budget expense, potential funding sources, hold at least two public workshop input sessions to overview the design and costs to the public, and to present this information to the board of selectmen. So there are four charges there. By my reading, the committee has fulfilled all four charges.
Do we have an opportunity to extend their charge, given what we've heard from the committee themselves? I mean, I...
That's what we want to discuss.
I think, I think we, of course, do. We've already done it once, right?
Yeah.
So the question is, what would that work be?
So, I mean, I think there's a couple of things. One is sort of supporting the CIP process, you know, as it goes, the budget goes through the CIP process. I think one would be continuing to look at the funding sources. And then a third would be supporting the lead-up to the referendum.
We have a number of our committee members here, including the chairman. Bill, are you guys done?
Thank you for asking. Speaking on the behalf, on behalf of our committee, we're unanimous in believing that our work is not done and that we have not, we have not completed our work. And there are four areas that we think are important for our committee to continue addressing. First is to refine our existing draft of the financial projections for the construction costs and possible cost offsets, plus the estimates for operating costs and revenues, specifically in line with our, the original design concept for the building, which is multi-use and flexible use of all the space. We want to explore more depth possibilities for public-private partnerships and developing revenue streams from local businesses. Second, we think it's very important that we support the CIP application through its different steps. We need specifically to meet soon with Stacy Nobis, who's been out of town recently. We have not had an opportunity to speak with her. We also want to address the board of finance, educate them about the findings of our recent progress report to you folks dated July 30. We would also like to remain available to serve as experts to town boards, commissions, and committees about the facts of this project that we have developed, including the CIP commission itself. We also think it's important that we further pursue certain grant opportunities, particularly with the Connecticut Trust for Historic Preservation, which is on hold until they fill their chair position, and with CHIPO. And fourth importantly, we... And fourth importantly, we think it's important to bring our findings to the wider public in a systematic way to ensure that should this project go to referendum, that the voters have access to accurate information. And of course, we generated a lot of information and we think it's important that we continue to serve as the spokespeople for the facts that we developed.
Thanks, Bill.
Well spoken.
Well, my reaction is there's still work to be done here and while Bruce, I understand the four specific items listed in the charge seem to have been satisfied, I hear the committee saying that they're really not done, that there's public education, there's refinement of what they have found so far, and there's ability to start applying for some of these grants and monies, which may indeed have quite an impact when it's time for referendum, knowing if there are going to be other sources of funding. So my feeling is we should let them ride. This is a group that has spent hundreds of hours becoming expert on this and what a valuable resource to this community. I hate to see them disbanded at this point.
Okay. So, Bill, the refinement of the numbers, are you, do you have concern that you don't have accurate numbers right now?
No, it's not a matter of not having accurate numbers. In the progress report that we presented on August 5th, but it was dated July 30th, and Bruce, you were available on speakerphone, but I think you're not here. There's a, and we did hand out written copies of our report. There's a wide array of data in there and we have full confidence in what we learned in them. There may, there may be further that we can go. Now, in particular, I'm interested in exploring with local business enterprises what opportunities they would like to have and to see in a potential community center and how we might fit that in with revenue for the operating costs.
So here's my concern, quite bluntly. We're trying to move this project along. The, we now have the task of crafting our capital budget for the upcoming year in preparation of submitting to the CIP. The project has to come through us to be on the CIP. If we let this project hang out there and don't start to pull the information we've got, we lose a whole budgeting season. So I'm content to let the committee continue to work, but we have to take the work to date, take that and incorporate it into our capital plan and start to move that project forward.
Isn't that already, isn't that already happening though, based on the CIP submission? I think it is.
Well, but there is, I don't know if there's such a thing as the CIP submission unless it comes from the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen submit to the CIP...
Well, they submit it into the Board of...
They submit it through the Vision Rec.
Yeah.
To the Board of Selectmen.
Through the July 1st.
Who then vote on it to send it on to CIP.
Right.
That's, so...
They made their submission.
The Board of Selectmen are responsible for all the capital planning in town. The CIP is the process by which we assure the Board of Finance that we're doing it in a responsible manner. So the CIP as a, as an organization has no authority other than to recommend back to the Board of Selectmen that this is a reasonable plan to do. And because the Board of Finance is involved in it, they have assurance that the diligence, that the appropriate level of diligence has been applied.
We submitted that application through the Board of, through the Vision Rec on July 1. And since then, we have some updated refinement of some of the projections for operating expenses, staffing, utilities, maintenance, and revenues. Would like to get that to Stacy.
Yeah, the operating expenses are part of the capital budget. The capital budget is just that. It's the, it's building itself.
Stacy was interested in that.
Well, they're, they're important things for us to know and certainly are important for us to accommodate in our planning, but at some point we have to say the numbers are good enough to move the project forward. If the committee is saying they're not, then okay, I guess. But I would hate to see us drag this through yet another budget cycle without its, without its due daylight.
I don't think that's what they're saying. I guess maybe we're hearing two totally different things. And so what I'm hearing, what you're saying is you would like to sunset the committee. Is that what you're suggesting?
I'm saying, okay, let's, let's, I've gone off on a bit of a tangent here. I need us to begin to incorporate all of this information into our capital plan for next May's referendum.
Which I think we'll do as a part of the process anyway, when we deliberate.
Which means that we're going to take the data that we have now and begin to plan with it.
Right, we're not going to start that.
How much should we expect that data to change while we're...
We stand by those data.
Okay. Which I think you should. I mean, I've just put a phenomenal amount of work into it and it's, it's much more detailed than probably we have any right to expect. So I have every confidence in, in the numbers. With respect to getting grants, can you actually get grants before there's been a referendum?
Most likely not because there's a good deal of upfront cost to applying for these grants. I don't think it's fair to ask the taxpayers to fund that process until and unless it's approved their referendum.
So, I mean, I think the horse here in front of the cart is us getting it in front of the taxpayers in a way that they can approve it.
Exactly.
So it sounds like we're all in agreement on the process. I'm still not sure if you're trying to disband...
I can't tell you. Can you make a recommendation? Because I'm struggling with where we're going.
I'm open to hearing why the committee should stay together. I, I just, I don't see the need for it right now.
Bruce, we fed back to the library, the library came up with a budget as to what they had to spend. Then they went and applied for some grants and got them. And it wasn't until after you knew what the library grants were that you improved the bonding from the town.
Fair enough, that's a private entity. It's not a town.
They started with X number of dollars, got X grants, and the town came up with the net.
Right, but like that...
Same idea. But it's said that Academy's a town property and not, and not a private entity. I understand. It's all going to be managed with town funds and not private funds.
But two to four million dollars is material.
Conceptually, that's pretty much the...
But they've identified the universe of grants, really, to, to, to a very high level of detail.
Right, but will the CIP be evaluating those? If you don't know what's in?
So, we, well, we can't, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, we can't put a referendum together with an expected grant amount. The referendum is, is going to be for the total amount. And then we will seek the grants after the fact, just like the schools are saying. They expect to get reimbursement from the state, but they, but they don't have that money in hand, so the referendum is for the full amount of the capital improvements to the school. It's exactly the same situation. So yes, we need to educate the public on what the, what those grants might look like. And even, even assign some probability to it.
We see that as a critically important task for us to continue doing is to bring this information to the public.
And we have citizens here who are offering to stay involved and active and help drive something for us. I think we should be taking full advantage of this.
Sure, so again, somebody can, just tell me what it is that we're going to do. I'm sure I'll be on board with it.
You made the actions. I'm trying to find out what you're recommending.
Hold on.
May I just add to this? So Colliers, who helped formulate the initial capital budget, gave us a two-year window to hold to that number. So with the process that we must go through, we're starting losing time. Preaching to the choir here, but the process of going through some of these commission requests take time. We're willing to do the due diligence, pay forward our bed, that if it goes through, we've prepared to then act. If we stop now, I think we're going to lose some ground and then we'll have to start at that point. So if you're willing to let us volunteers do some work on behalf of the town, I think we can buy some time. And I think it's proven to us who've had our nose in it that there's some decent money to be had. It's ours for the asking if we do the process, do the project through the process. They would benefit from this upfront time.
Look, can I spin the question around? Because you sort of started with the action of, why would we not take advantage of them offering their services to help us here as we, you know, run up towards a referendum? I'm struggling with that, why not?
So, like I said, I'm not against the committee continuing work. I just want to understand what that work is. If it is to continue to look for upward funding sources, I think, I think that's great. If it is to look at a public-private partnership, I think that changes the nature of the project and complicates it in a way that I don't see us planning for in this budget cycle. At some point, we have to take the information, call it good, and move forward with it. I think we're there. I think if the committee wants to continue to meet and look at the creative funding side of it, that's great. Our planning runs separate from that, right? So unless, unless somebody's going to guarantee money, our planning is going to be the town will have to pay for the whole thing and then we'll work like heck to get as much offset funding as we can. That's the only way we can responsibly do this.
That's correct.
So Bruce, we've invested in this panel with experts and they've invested their own valuable time and energy. And this project continues to need to be shepherded. It's a complicated project. It needs to be shepherded through the town planning processes and eventually it needs to be shepherded through a public referendum process. This is an objective source of information for town officials and the public. These folks are now far more expert and able to speak about the various subtleties and nuances of all that is involved in this project. I can't for the life of me think why we would dismiss them.
Propose a charge. I don't see it, but, but give me something to agree with.
I would just take the four things that Bill articulated as, as value-added services. I mean, at the end of the day, if we're going towards a referendum, we have an opportunity to bring down the cost, the end cost of the solution, why wouldn't we do that? It seems like a win-win. It sort of seems like a no-brainer to me.
So if, if we're continuing to cost this project out, I don't know how we move it forward for consideration in the capital plan.
Well, I think the numbers are the numbers.
I agree.
Fourteen million. And this is all, this would be great if, but I, you know, I don't think that those numbers are going to change as far as what goes into CIP.
No, I think there, there's kind of a ton of diligence that goes into it. I wouldn't expect them to move anywhere but up because we're delaying the project.
Can I make a motion? I'll make a motion to move the process forward here. So I'll make a motion to continue the committee with their current charge and to explore funding sources, including potential revenue sources.
Really, the only, the revised charges are really to look at additional funding sources and projected revenues. I mean, again, that's not going to impact what goes to referendum and what people are going to vote on because that, none of that is guaranteed. So the, so the charge really is revised. They've already taken care of. I mean, a lot of that has been done. I mean, it's fourteen million or whatever the number is, is that goes to CIP. So that can't, isn't going to be touched. That's, that's what has to go into the, into the CIP.
But every piece of this impacts what the public sees. So, so as they continue to refine things, that, that potentially helps with public opinion.
It helps with public opinion, but it's not going to change the number that you and I are going to vote on.
Well, it may if you have additional offsets, wouldn't it?
No, because I don't, those offsets can't go in there unless you actually could apply for a grant and it gets approved and you know you're going to receive it, you can't assume that it's going to, as we're saying, same thing with, with the Ford of Bed. There's, you, you, there's, there's an assumption that yes, we're going to apply for, you know, for, for these grants, but there's no guarantee we're going to get them. So what the public is going to see is the gross amount. Public, now, in, in making a decision, if you're a taxpayer making a decision as to whether or not, you know, you are comfortable with that, you might say, I am really comfortable with their, that this, what this committee has done. I feel comfortable enough to say I'm willing to spend fourteen million dollars, but it may only cost, cost us a lot. That's, that's...
That's the point, yes.
That's the whole point of waving the banner, saying, here's, to the public, here's what we found and here's, here's what we may be able to do. I think that's going to impact public opinion rather significantly.
That's correct.
Well, it could, exactly.
So I, I made, hang on. So I've made a motion. Do I?
I'll second it.
Is there a second to the motion?
What was it again?
I made a motion to extend the committee's charge and continue to look at additional funding sources and revenue sources.
Well, I would propose that we strike item four, which is a dated charge of July 22nd.
That's fine. I'm just saying, extend the charge first.
That's fine. I, I guess, and I'm happy to support that, but when we move into capital budgeting mode, I'm going to go with the data that's in front of us. I'm not going to go with the data that we're waiting three months from now to get or what it might be in six months. So I think the public education discussion is, is probably the argument that resonates the most with me for the charge with this committee. I, I'm not a fan of looking at public-private partnerships. I'm not a fan of continuing to fine-tune the numbers. I think the numbers are as tuned as, as they get at this stage in any capital project for us. And just as a refresher, Scott, you'll remember this, when we put a capital project forward, it tends to be a fairly round number. It's a number with a lot of zeros at the end, right? Just to get us in the ballpark.
Yeah.
And one of the very first stages is we take a portion of that number and dedicate it to our hard planning. So we come up with a hard budget and we usually space that with some time between the actual start of the project. And that's where we get into the numbers that we're truly committing to.
Scott, would you be willing to amend your motion to include Bruce's suggestion about public education?
Yeah, absolutely. Yes. I thought that was part of what I think Bill very eloquently stated in his four ideas too.
Your charge didn't actually...
Oh, I'm adding it then. Do you second that?
I'll, I'll second that, yeah.
Bruce will second.
I'll plan with that.
All right.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number fifteen, discuss and take action to approve the resignation of Mark Katsbren from the Board of Finance.
So move with gratitude.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number sixteen, discuss and take action to approve the appointment of Justin Murphy to the Board of Finance for terms expire November 5th, 2019.
I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second it then.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Number seventeen, discuss and take action to approve the resignation of Scott Sandoro from the Conservation Commission.
So moved.
With our gratitude. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Number eighteen, discuss and take action to approve the resignation of Richard Gedney from the Conservation Commission.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discuss and take action to approve the resignation of Carol Snow from the Historic District Commission Altitude.
So moved.
Second.
With our gratitude. All in favor?
Aye.
Discuss and take action to approve the resignation of Steve Somer from the zoning Board of Appeals.
So moved with our gratitude.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number twenty-one, discuss and take action to approve the appointment of Bill Piggott from the Zoning Board of Appeals Alterate to Zoning Board of Appeals Full Member for terms expire November 1st, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discuss and take action to appoint Dennis Crowe to the Zoning Board of Appeals Alterate for terms expire November 1st, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Maybe you guys all, I was going to say maybe you want to be on the Conservation Commission. Tax evasion to refund, we have none tonight. Public comment?
Brian Brady, 108 Genesee Lane. Just as an outside observer of the last three meetings I've been to, it seems to me, and also as a former purchasing director for a Fortune 500 company for 22 years, I think you guys would really benefit from having a central purchasing guy. Even in the charter, if you were, well, I would hope in the charter you consider opportunities to consolidate with other towns in purchasing opportunities, but you need somebody that has experience and can look at things objectively, independently, and review it. And based on my experience, you'll save 10%. And based on my experience, you'll save 10%. 10%. You'll pay for that person pretty quickly. So I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
Any other public comments?
Yes. I, Lino Neil, 49 Cottage Road. I just wanted to bring up something that's on the town website in terms of the Conservation Commission. What it states on the website is, "Applications to the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Inland Wetlands Agency are referred to the Conservation Commission upon submittal. Both boards will seek Conservation Commission input on open space and environmental issues." So that's what, if I'm, you know, I'm looking on the town website, I'm looking for some input because Inland Wetlands did not have a public hearing. So then, and according to Connecticut State Statute, it's recommended that they do if it's in the best interest of the public. But if I don't even have the Conservation Commission reviewing this and have an opportunity to start getting involved in an early process as a neighbor, then we really don't have a good process in place, in my opinion and in many people's opinion. The night that this was presented, we had, we had signatures by thirty neighbors, we had thirty neighbors sitting in the room when this was passed. So I think that we need to, you need to look at the process and fix the process or change the website, but you need to do one or the other.
Thank you. We noticed that last time of the meeting, the website wording should be changed with the attention of Dave Anderson. We would not have changed the situation. We were, Wetland did everything they were supposed to do and if we had gone to this site, we would have made the same conclusions, to be honest. We would not have changed any of the decisions on hindsight.
I don't, I really don't want to start the debate, okay? Thank you very much, everybody. Any other public comment? Ask for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.